Okay, we'll call the order of the regular city council meeting for February fourteenth with a roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Here.
City Clerk Patterson. Council members, Ratty, absent, Lawson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Schmitt.
Here.
Assistant City Manager Driscoll.
Here.
City Attorney Adams.
Here.
Okay, and our invocation speaker today would be Pastor Barb West from Sparks Church of the Nazarene. Where'd she go? Oh, there she is. Come on up, Barb. Thank you. For real stand.
Most of us are familiar with a book of songs, and I just wanted to read that song that I was playing this morning, afternoon, it's been a long day. And it says, "Blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord, the people he chose for his inheritance." So with that, wave your bow with me in prayer. Our Father God, we are so thankful that we are Americans where we can come and celebrate with the city council and have an invocation beforehand. We thank you for the freedom and the liberty that is extended to us in this wonderful place called the United States of America. And we thank you for Nevada and particularly for Sparks. We thank you too for this fine council and welcome all the new members that were elected in November. And what a process we have that we're able to cast our votes and vote for whom we'd like to see lead us. And so as they meet today to lead this city called Sparks, we just ask you to give them wisdom beyond their own and help them to make decisions that will be good for the populace and would be honoring to our God. We pray that you would bless this country and bless Sparks and this fine council. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Mr. Driscoll, would you lead her, lead us in the...
Yes, sir. Please join me. My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Martini and Sean Carrier in Washington DC and Julia had an emergency, so they will not be here today. Comments from the public. I don't have any cards. Would anybody like to speak at this time? Okay, I'll close the public comment, bring it back to the approval of the agenda, consideration of taking items out of sequence, deleting items or adding items. Anybody want to pull anything? Okay, looking for a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion. In a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? And now we're going to figure out how to vote on this thing here. Yep, there we go. Okay, all in. Go ahead and vote. It passes four to nothing. Everybody present? Push and. There you go. Okay. Bear with me today.
I think this is going to be short.
This is the longest part of the meeting. Okay. Recommendation to approve the minutes of the city council workshop of January the eighteenth, two thousand and eleven, and the regular meeting of January twenty-fourth, two thousand and eleven. Anyone take anything out? Mr. Schmitt?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a sec-- or do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? And please vote. Passing unanimously with everybody's present. And I'll get there. Okay, announcements and presentations. We have a proclamation for Black History Month. Is Mr. Feenster here? Okay, I will read the proclamation and we'll go from there. Whereas African-American history is an important part of our nation's history and heritage and should be honored and embraced throughout the year, and whereas February has been designated as a month to recognize and celebrate historical events focusing on the success in the history of African-Americans, and whereas African-Americans have contributed to the history and progress of the city of Sparks and throughout the Truckee Meadows, and whereas as a result of determination, hard work, intelligence, perseverance, African-Americans have made valuable and lasting contributions to our nation and city, helping to advance causes in all aspects of society, including business, education, politics, science, and the arts. And whereas the city of Sparks continues to work toward becoming an inclusive and diverse community which represents people of all ethnicities and backgrounds, and whereas during Black History Month, all Americans are encouraged to reflect on the past successes and challenges of African-Americans and look to the future to continue to improve society so that we live up to the ideals of freedom, equality, and justice. Therefore, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim February twenty-eleven National Black History Month. Okay, thank you. And if he shows up, we'll give it to him. All feel quiet in here today. Consent items. Anybody want to pull a consent item? Want to make a motion then, please? Move to approve. I'm sorry.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve consent items. Five-one through five-ten. Any further discussion? Hold on, go ahead and vote. Hang on, let me get it up there. Yeah. Okay, and that passes unanimously with those present. Six point one.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem and members of the city council. For the record, Neil Crutz, Director of Community Development and Acting Director of Public Works, joined today by John Martini, a civil engineer too. We are here today to present a potential change order to the Quail Street sanitary sewer rehabilitation project. It's a project that is currently under construction, a three-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand-dollar contract that the city council approved back on December thirteenth of two thousand and ten. And part of the sanitary sewer line, it's an eighteen-inch line serving roughly five-thousand residences on the northwest side of Sparks, part of the sanitary sewer line runs under Green Bay, under property that is Green Bay Elementary School. And one of the things we learned as we got into looking to replace this line is that we did not have an adequate easement on that line for the portion that ran under the school. We've been working with the school district for several months to try and acquire an easement for that line. Were unable to get it done when we originally put the project out on the street, so we withheld the piece that went under school property. But since that time, the school district has approved the sanitary sewer easement. So we are here today requesting that you approve a hundred and roughly thirty-thousand-dollar change order so that we can replace the sewer that runs across the school property. We have done a condition assessment on that section of the eighteen-inch line and found that it is very much in need of replacement. We have a good contract with P Line Construction. We feel we have good prices, and so we're here to ask for your approval to execute that change order and replace that additional three-hundred-feet line. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the council? Okay, looking for a motion. Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second. You know, when I'm looking at the screen, I apologize for that. Okay, we have a motion from Councilman Schmitt and a second from Councilman Lawson. Any further discussion? Okay, please vote. And that passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, moving to six point two. Is it you again, Neil?
Yes, sir. Again, Neil Crutz, for the record, here with my second item of the day, and that is to request approval for a temporary complement change at the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility so that we can assess some organizational structure changes out at the plant. Over the last couple of years, we have, we have lost most of the management ranks at the treatment plant, the most recent one being the Operations and Maintenance Manager, Starlin Jones, whose last day with the city was last Friday. And we lost Starlin after having taken a seven-and-a-half percent pay cut last July first, like the rest of the executive and management and confidential folks. Facing a second one this coming July first, Starlin chose to look for greener pastures, if you will, and he found one in the Central Contra Costa County Sanitation District and has taken a job over there operating their plant. But with that departure, in Starlin's case, it was twenty-five years or just short of twenty-five years of experience that left us, putting that or looking at that in combination with the work that we have been doing under the Sustainable Sparks Services Initiative, where we are trying to come up with a sustainable, long-term organization that can live within its means, as vacancies have come about out at Tom Worf, we have been assessing those on a case-by-case basis, asking ourselves, do we need to replace that position? Can we live without it? If we don't need that exact position, are there needs elsewhere that we should look at filling? All with the goal of trying to come up with an operational staff and a maintenance staff that meets the needs of our citizens and the citizens in the broader Truckee Meadows as we treat their wastewater. Adding in a third consideration is it's been my experience in the fourteen years I've been an employee at Sparks that it does look to promote from within whenever possible. So putting all three of those together led me to an idea that we could create three acting positions, the first one being an acting plant manager, and then an acting operations manager, and an acting maintenance manager for a period of up to one year, so that we could go out to the treatment plant and solicit interests from the people out there that have experience that might want to take a step into the management ranks, might want to try it out, and give them an opportunity, whether it's for sixty days, ninety days, I'm not quite sure. I want to see what kind of interest we have out there before we talk specifically about how long to give qualified people a tryout, but to give them that chance, to try and promote from within, to tap the vast amount of experience that we do have out there. And at the same time, continue to look at organizational issues to make sure that we try to run the most efficient organization possible, and that at the end of that, that trial period, which I've asked for being up to a year, I don't know that we would utilize a year, that's again going to come down to how many people are interested and are felt that they have the ability to do the work. At the end of that, we would come back with a final organizational structure and then some recommended permanent complement changes out there to put us on that road towards sustainability. I anticipate that this will cost, oh, if it does, if the trial period does go for a one-year period, it would cost us no more than thirty-four thousand dollars. We would fall back to existing acting temporary pay that's in our resolutions and our contracts where people in an acting role receive five percent for the first thirty days, and then it goes up to ten after that point in time. So it's a very low-cost item. We would fund it with the savings gained from positions that have been dedicated over the last year that are in our budget that we wouldn't refill right away. So I'm not asking for any kind of budget adjustment. I am committing to living within the budget that we have out there. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions? Mr. Carrigan.
Neil, just real quick, you're saying now that the acting are all going to come from within, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So you're just going to promote from within?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Have you already posted these jobs or have you got some interest?
We, I have, we have not posted the jobs. We do have interest. I have already talked to the staff at the treatment plant to let them know that I was going to be here today, asking for your permission to do this. And just one more level of detail is that my intent would be to appoint the acting plant manager, but then open the acting operations and acting maintenance manager positions for that internal tryout process.
Okay, any further questions?
I just want to commend you on some out-of-the-box thinking, and that's what we need at this time, and good idea.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Okay, no further questions. Looking for a motion?
All right, all right, now let me try. I moved to a...
Go ahead.
...one-year temporary complement change at the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility to assess organizational structural changes, structured changes.
Mr. Carrigan?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Please vote. It passes unanimously with those here. Thank you, Mr. Crutz. Thank you. Six point three is the first reading of Bill number two-six-three-one. Linda?
First reading and possible discussion of Bill number twenty-six-thirty-one, a detachment request by Tahoe Reno Commercial Center LLC from the city of Sparks of a parcel approximately thirty-point-two-three acres in size in the I Industrial Zoning District generally located west of the USA Parkway Interchange, east of the Patrick Interchange, shares the southern property line with the right-of-way of Interstate Eighty's westbound lanes and is approximately ten-point-five miles east of the intersection of Vista Boulevard and Interstate Eighty, Sparks, Nevada.
Okay, this is the first reading for Bill number two-six-three-one. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular city council meeting on Monday, February twenty-eighth, two thousand and eleven. Six point four. Linda?
First reading and possible discussion of Bill number two-six-three-two, a detachment request from Stonefield Incorporated from the city of Sparks for a site approximately three-hundred-and-seventy-four-point-four-six acres in size in the TC Torres Commercial Zoning District generally located in the East Truckee River Canyon north of Interstate Eighty and Walthem Way, approximately six miles east of the intersection of Vista Boulevard and Interstate Eighty, Sparks, Nevada.
This is the first reading for Bill number two-six-three-two. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular city council meeting on Monday, February twenty-eighth, two thousand and eleven. Item six point five.
CA three-ten, Bill number two-six-three-three, an ordinance amending Title Twenty of the Sparks Municipal Code, updating the Adult Business Chapter by replacing the IC Industrial Commercial Zoning District reference with the I Industrial Zoning District and providing other matters properly relating thereto.
This is the first reading for Bill number two-six-three-three. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular city council meeting on Monday, February twenty-eighth, two thousand and eleven. Okay, moving on, if I can figure out how to get there from here. There is no planning and zoning, so move to number eight, planning and zoning public hearings and action item, and I'll open this up for public comment. Anybody wishing to speak at this time? Okay, we'll bring it back. It's all you.
Could I have the overhead, please? Before you this afternoon's, a request for a tentative subdivision map. It's for two-hundred-and-thirty-six lots on a site approximately forty-nine acres in size. It's located in the Pioneer Meadows Plan Development. Now, the development site is designed as a private age-restricted community. On the monitor is an illustration of the development site plan. To the top of the page is north and also the entrance into the subdivision. The regional trail extends to the east, the south, and to the west of the project site. In the center of the project site is that large green area, and that's where they propose to build their public clubhouse with various recreation amenities to serve the private community. Also, the streets within this community are private streets and will be maintained by the Property Owners Association as well as the community amenities in the common areas. Now, as is outlined in the staff report, the community development staff is requesting an amendment to conditions number twenty-two and twenty-three. Now, these conditions reference a possible public park site, which is condition number twenty-two, and an existing pond area, which is condition number twenty-three. Now, these two conditions were previously approved at Planning Commission with more stringent timelines to complete the project's improvements. However, city staff, in an attempt to work with the developer, have agreed to new timelines and language in the amended conditions attached to this report. So staff is recommending approval of the tentative map subject to the conditions one through twenty-one and the amended conditions number twenty-two and twenty-three. And of course, I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Mr. Carrigan?
Yeah, I have one problem with twenty-three. Let's talk about the pond, okay? If the resident city council wants to follow along, it's on page two-fifty-four, it talks about finding eleven. How do, let's just bring everybody to speed. How did that pond come into being?
Councilman Carrigan, Tim Thompson, senior planner for the record. The pond was used as a borrow site for the required fill in order to grade the Pioneer Meadows Development.
So they dug the hole?
Correct.
Okay, and that was how many years ago? Do you remember?
Boy, this probably goes back to two thousand and four.
Okay, I was thinking like two thousand, but I was very close. And it filled up with water?
Correct.
So now we have a big hole in the ground that filled up with water?
Correct.
Okay, and what was that supposed to be?
Well, there were a number of agreements between Pioneer Meadows and the city of Sparks. Originally, the city approached Kylie Ranch as well as Pioneer Meadows for a golf course that would have been constructed around the existing wetlands for the first tee program. There were also some arrangements made with Pioneer Meadows as far as grading of the Golden Eagle Regional Park and the using of the excess dirt from Golden Eagle to be used for fill within Pioneer Meadows. However, after the BLM and Department of Interior came back and essentially denied the request to remove those, that dirt from the site, it in essence put the city in a position where we could not fulfill our obligations related to that agreement.
Yeah, so now it was, in the handbook is open space, right?
Correct.
Okay. And maybe somebody from the, you know, the applicant may want to come down and answer my question on how, I think that condition twenty-three should stand as it's, you know, as written. In other words, they fixed that pond up because the regional trail's going out there, there's a new development right next to it, so I'm kind of, I'm in a quandary on why we can't have them fix that pond before, I mean, they agreed to the condition, right?
Correct. I...
And now what's, why are we changing it?
Staff had originally placed the condition that all the improvements be completed prior to that first C of O. The applicant came back to staff and said, you know, we're not in agreement with that. Can we work something out? So the city sat down with them, staff sat down and essentially worked through the issue, and that's what you see in condition twenty-three.
Right, but they didn't want to do that. But what I'm saying is that that staff's recommendation, the way it's written, is to fix that before the first, was it first C of O or was it first final map?
First final map.
So why shouldn't we, why should we not stick to that? Why shouldn't we have them do what they promised to do? Because it's been there for a long, ten years, what'd you say, six years? As a hole in the ground with water in it. And I don't think anybody thought it was going to fill up with water, but when you dig a hole out there in the wetlands, that's what happens.
And I would ask the applicant to come up and answer your question, Councilman.
One down. And state your name to the record, please.
Kerry Chisholm with Wood Rogers, representing the applicant. When the initial condition was written for the pond improvement, the issue we had with agreeing with the condition the way it was written is there's additional material that the developer is intending to pull out of that to finish the remainder of the development. So we came back and met with city staff to kind of form a condition that tried to meet both needs, where we're finishing the majority of the pond with the first phase to try and accommodate, and then leaving the second portion somewhat open, that it's not as much of an issue, and then following up behind that.
But it's still an issue, right?
Yes.
So, I mean, why the change from the original? I mean, to me, if you had a problem with the original condition, that's when we should have satisfied that.
You know, that's...
And that's, I mean, I was here when the original condition was put in, and nobody came up and complained about having to fix that pond before the final map of that phase.
Now, you're talking about the condition that was written for this...
I'm talking about the condition that's in here right now. Twenty-three has not changed. It's in there now. You're asking for us to amend twenty-three.
No, the, I think what you're, I think what you're reading is the pond improvements that are shown, we have an amended condition that everybody's agreed to.
You have it up till this point, but what I'm saying is, the condition as it stands is number twenty-three, not the amended.
Right.
So my question is, why should we not hold you to your promise of doing that?
Well, when the, when the condition was written and we moved forward in, with Planning Commission, you know, we moved forward with the idea that we'd work with city staff to come up with the answers that they needed and we needed in order to understand what we would be agreeing to with the pond improvements with the first final map. So we went back and did some more research on what the environmental concerns were, some of the improvements and the concerns of the staff.
Well, my concern is that, my concern is it's not going to get finished. Okay, that's my concern. And if we make you finish it before you get the first final map approved, then I think that'll make you finish it. Because it's been there for a long time, and it's not like I don't hear about this from people that live out there that go by and see it, and people that live in Pioneer Meadows that see the big hole with water in it. And now this is going to be right next to it, so I'm kind of inclined to stay with the original condition.
Okay. Mr. Schmitt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Just, was there any bonds attached to this improvement on the original scope? When we gave the original approval of things, was there any bonds attached to this improvement?
Currently, there's no bond attached to that.
Is this one of the cases where we're getting bitten by not requiring bonds at the time of approval?
Well, it would be prudent for us to require a bond with that approval, with the first approval with Planning Commission.
But staff has always come back and said they've asked for the waivers of those bonds. That's what I'm asking, is the staff has always come back and said, we don't, we want to waive those approvals of the bonds on the first conditions. And so is this, is this the case where we've actually created the problem in some sort? Is that we haven't put what's normally a hammer out there to get done, nor do we have a backup to go back there and have something that says to do this?
Okay. Thanks, John.
Thank you, Councilman Schmitt. It was bonded originally.
So there's, is there a bond attached right now?
No, there is not.
There is not?
No.
We released a bond?
In good faith at the time. This project, let's call it two thousand and six, was moving rapidly forward. Bonding capacity at the time, you have to remember, it wasn't always Lennar. This changed hands from Barker Coleman to Lennar. During the change through, there was demands to reduce the amount that was bonded out there, because it was nearly six hundred acres of development going full blast. We were in the process of putting together the final plan for this facility, this basically a borrow site that was going to become a wetlands park. Things were moving forward, and I'd reduced the bond. There is a minimal bond, but not nearly enough to take care of it in the estate that it is now.
Okay, great. And maybe we can find a happy medium here for Councilman Carrigan. His concern is that this is not going to get done. Is there a possibility of reinstating a bond that calls for this pond to be done in a certain amount of period timeframe outside of the first map recording? So it doesn't matter what happens with...
If I can understand your concern in lieu of a bond, I would ask for cash in lieu of bond, to be held in trust by the city.
Cash is king. We could do that if that's...
Well, the problem we're having with bonds, as you know, in this environment right now is we don't know which bonding company we can trust.
Yeah, I'm just throwing that as a solution.
I understand.
If there's something that we can do to go ahead and enforce this thing, we've taken the hammer away, how do we put the hammer back on? Address Mr. Carrigan's concern about some kind of timeframe. If the developer wants to put cash upfront on that, can we find agreement? First off, is that okay with Councilman Carrigan to go down that path? Thank you.
For the record, Neil Crutz, I think we're to the point where you as the council, tell us what your desire is, and we'll execute it for you.
Let me, let me kind of clarify something. The problem is that we've never finished the pond, right? The shore work hasn't been done or any of the...
I think there's, there's... I think there's really two concerns, if I'm, you know, trying to play both sides of the table. The city's concerned is the stabilization and the finished improvements around the ponds are not completed. The developer's concern is that there's, they feel that there's still an asset there as a borrow site. So what our intention was with reworking the condition was to finish the pond in its state today and not make any representation that we feel that the asset for going after the grading is still there to this point to try and accommodate what's needed in order to clean up the issue with the pond itself on the city's side and make sure we're accommodating for the erosion and the eyesore and the other issues that have been brought up. And that was kind of the intent with the improvements that were proposed in the revised condition. And then those would need to be bonded for with that first final map as it's indicated in the condition. But completion of the entire pond, I think the disconnect for us is what does, what does that mean? I mean, for the developer's side, that means now... I mean, for the developer's side, that means now moving forward with moving a million yards of dirt to a project that's not, you know, right in front of them today. So the condition that was worked out with staff was intended to try and accommodate both, that the developer would put forth the cost to do the slope stabilization, the improvements around the pond to fence it off, and try and address all the issues that were brought up by staff at the time the tentative map was submitted.
Well, I hear you say, did you say it's still got a lot of assets in it where you can still dig it out? Is that what you're talking about?
Well, the pond is intended to continue to be a borrow source from the developer's end. They still wanted to pull the material out to finish the remaining phases of Pioneer Meadows. As development has slowed down, they obviously don't have much marketable land out there. So until that project comes to fruition, they really would have no reason to go out and spend, you know, the millions of dollars to pull the money, to pull the dirt out of the pond to build the future phases of the development. So, you know, as kind of a work through, they asked to kind of phase the improvements so they can get their ducks in a row and see what it would take to get the rest of the material out of the pond, and in the meantime accommodate what the city needs as far as stabilization around the edges of the pond adjacent to this development.
See, and I think what you're asking for is an indefinite period of time to go in there and get what you need.
You know, and that's kind of why I say the obligation to do the improvements around the pond established with this final map, in the developer's eyes, in no way tie the city to allowing them to move forward with getting that dirt in the future. There really is, you know, that's for us to assess whether that's possible or not. There was some issues brought up on whether they would allow the pond to be constructed with the other agencies that we'd have to get approval from. So this was intended to be worked through to accommodate the pond in its condition today, to make sure that we were moving forward with the improvements needed to get the city comfortable, and also allow the developer time to go in and do the homework they needed to do to get the rest of the material out of there at a later date.
So part of the problem is you don't have anywhere to put the dirt if you took it out there today?
That's correct.
And we don't see that being remedied anytime soon?
No.
So, that's what I'm saying, it's indefinite period of time you're looking for before you stabilize those banks and everything on that pond.
And you know, and that's why we came through with the second phase of it. We put a limit on it. That was a concern the city had, is that, you know, we don't want it to sit out there forever, so we put a five-year limit on it, or the 170th lot, essentially. So it's not an indefinite-
And it's been out there how long now? Did you say 2004?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Carrigan?
Okay. You're still planning on taking dirt out of there just to build up the rest of the Pioneer Meadows?
Yes.
So you don't plan on finishing the pond? You're still using it as a fill?
We plan on stabilizing the banks and addressing the issues that were brought up.
Well, I guess I'm confused then. Why did you buy off on condition 23 when you first were doing the project?
We didn't buy off on the original condition.
You didn't? It was in there.
No, we-
It's in the handbook. Am I wrong, Neil? Is that condition 23 in the handbook?
As it is exactly written-
No, that is not in the handbook. But what is in the handbook is that the concept that they will create a borrow source for their benefit and leave us with an amenity and have it turned up in a timely manner.
What am I reading on page 260, then?
That is a condition that we applied to this tentative map that was approved by the planning commission.
Oh, okay.
So the spirit of that condition, it does exist in the handbook. So it's not a black and white yes or no.
Yeah, I thought it did. Okay, I thought it was in the-
It does.
The planning commission, this went before the planning commission, and they okayed 23 as it stands?
Yes, sir.
I agree with him. Obviously, what was the vote at the planning commission?
It was unanimous.
To do it that way?
Yes, sir.
In lieu of a bond? Because, I mean, it's either or to me. I mean, you know, they have to complete the stabilization until your, because I think you're the administrator-
Yes, sir.
-to your satisfaction before the first final map, or before the final map is approved. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And the planning commission bought off on that?
Yes, they did.
Okay. You guys couldn't convince them not to?
No, we expressed concern at the time in the planning commission that we'd work with the city to modify that condition.
And why did the planning commission want to do it the other way? Why do they want to have the way it's written?
They moved forward with the understanding that we would come back to city council with revised language.
They didn't want to revise it there? So they just, okay, they put it in our lap?
Well, they were waiting for more information. We worked with the city on providing additional information on the amount of-
Do you see where I'm coming from about how kind of uncomfortable I am? Because you're telling me that you're going to come out and stabilize a bank, but you're still going to grab dirt out of there for use to level out the project. Isn't that correct? Isn't that what you just told me?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I understand your discomfort with it, but I think the condition as it's written is to try and to meet the needs of both parties.
Well, I have a hard time because I just don't think it's going to get done. Okay? How can you make me feel good? Tell me how it's going to get done. What can I do to make it get done? So you'll, do you want to put up a cash bond? Like Mr. Schmidt said? You want a couple minutes to talk about it?
Yeah.
Okay?
One final question. Sure we can take a minute. Are you making this hole bigger, wider or deeper?
The expansion of the pond would be both.
Both?
You know, it's-
So you could actually stabilize most of the banks except where you want to take the-
Yeah, there's some of the areas on the pond that are already constructed close to the limits that we would be ultimately-
What was the plan if it didn't fill up with water?
You know, the pond-
Because I don't remember anybody ever telling me they were going to dig a big, you know, new marina out in my ward. I don't remember that. So, I mean, if somebody told me that, I guess I forgot.
You know, the plan was for it to fill back in with water and to be a pond. There was plans submitted and reviewed. I mean, it's a very large-
I know it was supposed to be a golf course around there, and it was supposed to be like a small pond. I remember that part.
Yeah, I believe it's been through a couple changes through the process.
Yes, okay.
Okay, Mr. Schmidt?
I just wanted to, the point, the agreement for us, for the City of Sparks, we were supposed to transport dirt from Golden Eagle to fill the hole.
Actually, under the idea of-
Exploring from Golden Eagle, this hole would not have been dug, or would have at least been much, much smaller.
Right, and that's where the growth of the pond came in place, because we couldn't bring dirt off from Golden Eagle to fill up.
That is correct.
So that's why it got much, much bigger than-
That is correct.
So I wanted to make sure that that's not something the developer, you know, they counted on us coming through, and, you know, we're at the mercy of the BLM, and we didn't do that. So the pond was supposed to be small, manageable now, because we didn't get our, weren't able to fulfill our end of the agreement. It's much bigger than, I just want to make sure that that was clear. Thank you.
Okay. Did you want to take a few minutes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Be good.
We'll take a short recess then, for how much time do you need? Five minutes?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll take until quarter to three.
And you?
Good afternoon. Yeah. For the record, my name is Garrett Gordon. I'm an attorney with Lewis and Oroka today representing Lennar Communities. We just huddled up and we think there's a lot of ambiguity and some vagueness in the current condition, in the existing condition, and sitting here today trying to work out a deal, we would respectfully ask for some more time. We want to understand each of you guys' expectations of what you anticipate the pond would look like, give us a chance to talk to our folks and hopefully come up with something that works for both the city and the applicant in the next couple of weeks. So I'm really happy to waive time on, on the record and respectfully request be placed on a time certain February 28th agenda. Thank you.
Mr. Carrigan?
You know, it's up to you if that's what you wanted to do.
Well, we need a motion to continue this, but I mean...
Yeah, well, I, I know, but I'm just saying, I thought we could work it out right now, but, okay?
Mr. Lawson?
I'll make a motion to continue this item till the February 28th city council meeting.
Mr. Schmidt?
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, Mr. Schmidt?
Yeah, just a quick question, Neil. I don't know how long it takes us to go and find out the answer to the question we were discussing is that if we took the option of remanding this back to the planning commission, are we out of the loop then 100%? We're done with it? Or does it still come back to us no matter what the planning commission says?
If you remanded to, to the planning commission, because this is a tentative map, it still needs to come back for your approval. The planning commission is a recommending body when it comes to tentative match and you have the final authority.
Do you see any advantage of doing that? I guess the maker of the motion can answer that question too. Doesn't matter to me. I'm willing to go ahead and just continue. I just want to throw that option out and make sure...
I, I don't feel like we would be denying the planning commission a, a right or an opportunity by not going back to them. I, I would be very comfortable with, you know, having this just come right back to the city council.
Mr. Carrigan? Oh, you, I'm sorry, Mr. Schmidt, you're done?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that the planning commission put a stricter timeframe on this. Is that not correct?
Yes, sir. That is the condition that they approved.
And we were going to lighten that a little bit here.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion?
Just a request, just to ensure that the record reflects that it was the applicant who requested the extension and has agreed to waive their, their rights under our ordinances and the battle law.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion? We have a motion and a second, all in favor. Well, let's do this a different way here than I'm doing this. Go ahead and vote, please. It passes unanimously with everybody present. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll put that on the February 28th agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay, 8.2 has been pulled. Number nine, comments from the council, the city manager. Any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I have an announcement. There is currently one vacancy on the Sparks Advisory Committee for the disabled for a one-year term. Interested applicants should have knowledge of the challenges faced by the disabled community. Persons interested in serving on this committee should complete a community service application available from the city clerk's office. You may also apply online at the city's website, www.cityofsparks.us. Click on governing on the webpage, then click on boards, commissions, get involved, then click on community service application. Applications will be accepted until the close of business Friday, February 25th of this year.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I'd like to thank Linda and all of the staff who was involved and had taken a personal interest in the council's waistline. Thank you very much and a happy Valentine's Day to everybody.
Thank you. Any more comments?
It was pulled.
8.2 was pulled. Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.